Okay, everyone. At 7:00 PM on Tuesday, April 25, 2023, I will open tonight's Lunenburg Select Board meeting and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I will be chairing tonight's meeting as our Chair, Michael Ray Jeffries, is not present this evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube page after the meeting. For those wishing to attend on Zoom, tonight's Zoom webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to join by phone, the phone number is 888-475-4499. And once again, you'll enter the webinar ID of 909-174-0347. This agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and others reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions, but not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Do we have any public comment this evening from the board?
I have none.
None from me.
Yeah, if you want to, sure.
Just wanted to share in note passing of John Henshaw. Learned yesterday that John passed April 11th and such an important member of our community. He, I was lucky to have worked with him on capital planning and finance, just a great guy.
Yeah, I will, I think three of us here had talked about mentioning John and his passing. So he served on the finance, most recently on the Finance Committee for over two terms, retiring just in the last couple of years, a little bit right before COVID, I believe. He also, before that, has been involved with the library and the Friends of the Library, as has his wife, for many, many years. He was on the Capital Planning Committee for several of his years when he was on the Finance Committee and had the honor of working with him in many different regards. We also served together back in the day when we organized about 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the Lunenburg Civic Forum that hosted a lot of debates in town of various positions, both state and local. More than that, of course, John was a very good friend to me, as remains his wife, and we thank him for his service and wish his wife and family the best on his passing. Okay, on a livelier note, announcement. This Friday is finally the Ninth Annual Are You Smarter Than Our Sixth Graders Game Show fundraiser. And I am very honored to be the host again for the ninth year. It is at the Lunenburg Middle School/High School Auditorium. It starts at 7:00, doors open at 6:30. And if you have not already gone to one of these, they're a lot of fun, a lot of energy and, you know, the interesting challenges. If you've seen some of the game shows that it's modeled after mainly Jeopardy and Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader, it has a little bit of both. Very well attended, so we'll have 16 teams like we've had in the last few years. So it'll prove to be a really good night of answers and questions and lots of laughter. If you have not already visited the Boys and Girls Club website or their Facebook page, I ask you to do so. It is a fundraiser, so they ask that you go there and either donate that night or attend just to give enthusiasm or donate online. So again, Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader, I think the board here has a team.
Yes.
Yes, so that's excellent. And I know there's lots of teams from all over the community. I believe the police and fire have a team and alumni members, et cetera. So again, a lot of fun. I look forward to seeing everybody out there. Any public comment from the public, please?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas LaFord. I live at 53 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg, and I've been there for 24 years. I'm here to propose that the beach house at the Lunenburg Town Beach be named in honor of Genevieve Nass. She's a triple educator in our community. Not only did she teach physical education at the primary school, she taught children dance, and she taught about half of the town of Lunenburg how to swim. I know she taught both of my kids and I know some other kids. She graduated from Lunenburg High and she's been a pillar of the community for many, many years. With her passing late last year from complications from COVID and her years and years and years of service at the town beach, I thought it would be nice to make this proposal. I just thought of it on Sunday afternoon. I posted it on Facebook in one of the Lunenburg groups and in two days, there were over 200 likes and 150 comments, all positive. I commented to Mr. Alonso that I've never seen anything have so much positive content on Facebook. So I wanted to inquire if it's as simple as I make the proposal and the board of selectmen run with it, or if I have to jump through other hoops to get this rolling.
I would.
I was just going to say it's a Parks Department issue, so you'd have to go to a Parks Department meeting and propose it with the Parks Department because they own the property.
So it is as easy as you did? This is a great rehearsal, you did excellently? And I know it'll be tuned up to incredible perfection when you go before the Parks Commission at their next meeting because they have control of the building and as an elected body, it would be their decision.
When is that next meeting? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
But if you'd like to confer with one of the members of the Parks Commission?
She's right over there.
But that's where you would go?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Burish, 20 Buttonwood Place. I'm here as Chair of the Board of Water Commissioners this evening. Just to kind of update you a little bit, pardon the pun, on something that's not going away called PFAS. It's a category of forever chemicals. It's in most water supplies nationally. The EPA is meeting as soon as next month to discuss lowering their allowable limits. We currently have one source that is above the allowable limits at this time. They're looking to lower the limits from 20 parts per trillion to four parts per trillion. If this new limit comes into place, they're talking about a three-year compliance. And we're looking at, I mean nationally, billions of dollars in water infrastructure to treat this, which, you know, get down to our local level, we're looking at millions of dollars. I think beyond that, the reason that they're really concerned about these chemicals is there are a lot of health concerns. Cancer, high cholesterol, pregnancy complications, problems getting pregnant, high blood pressure, thyroid disease. So I think whether they lower the limits or not, it's something that we need to be concerned with from a health perspective, and we're going to continue to work on that. That's one of our high priorities over at the Water District, and I figured I'd just keep you guys informed as to what's going on.
Appreciate that. I do have a question, maybe you don't know, because I know people have asked. So as the Water District, obviously, you're concerned with ingestion. But if it's mainly all bodies of water, is it a problem with people swimming in lakes? I mean, is this a problem?
I've asked that question myself, and right now, their main concern is ingestion. They're not concerned with absorption yet. I don't know if there's enough. It's such a new chemical that they found and how it affects people's health, and I don't know if they've really thoroughly studied how much. And I think this is one of the reasons that they're starting to find things and they want to, the EPA from their standpoint wants to eliminate it.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else for public discussion? Okay. Announcements?
None.
Communications from other boards?
I do not have any.
All right. Our fellow, our next presenters need no introduction. They've been here for many years. And so tonight, we have the Auditors of Powers and Sullivan, who do an auditing of all the town books with our town manager and finance director, who was in attendance today. And it looks like you're doing it solo tonight.
Yep.
All right. So I will ask you to come up and present the report.
Well, thanks for having me here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to.
Always a pleasure.
Present the results of the audit. Just like to start off by thanking the town manager, finance director, treasurer, collector, rest of the finance team, including the school finance team. Everybody was very cooperative and was really great about getting us the information that we needed. We got timely answers to all of our questions, and the audit really went smoothly from our standpoint. So we appreciate all the assistance that we got. I'd like to just start off with a few required communications before I get into the financial highlights and just let you know that our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. The significant accounting policies for the town can be found in Note 1 of the financial statements. There were no new accounting policies adopted during the year, and the application of existing policies was not changed. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements and are based on management's knowledge about past and current events and assumptions about future events. The most sensitive estimates in the financial statements relate to the net OPEB liability, the net pension liability, and depreciation on fixed assets. We evaluated the key factors and assumptions that go into those estimates, and we found them to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. As far as difficulties encountered in performing the audit are concerned, I'm happy to report that we had no difficulties in dealing with management while performing the audit. Audit adjustments. Our standards define an audit adjustment as a proposed correction of the financial statements that in our judgment may not have been detected except through our auditing procedures. And again, I'm happy to report that there were no such adjustments that were required. Disagreements with management. Our standards define a disagreement with management as a matter of whether or not resolved to our satisfaction concerning financial accounting, reporting, or auditing matters that could be significant to the financial statements or the auditor's report. And again, I'm happy to report there were no such disagreements with management. And the last item relates to management's consultations with other auditors. And this is similar to getting a second opinion on a matter. And in those cases, the standards require the consulting accountant to check with us to make sure that they have all the relevant facts related to whatever matter they've been hired to look into. And to our knowledge, there were no such consultations that occurred. And so those are the required communications. Just wanted to get those out of the way. And now, just getting into some of the details on the audit. The preliminary work was completed in early June, and then we came back out for our year-end audit work in mid-October. For preliminary work, we're usually focused on auditing the federal awards, debt, the budget. We test transactions. We basically try to get as much of a head start on the year-end audit work as we can. For the year-end audit work, we're cleaning up any like open items that we might have had from our preliminary work. We're completing all of our year-end audit procedures, and we're compiling the audit reports that you have in front of you today. The overall results of the audit were that we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That means that they're fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. All the reporting deadlines were met. The information that we received was accurate. And as I mentioned, all of our responses to our inquiries were timely. And there were no internal control deficiencies noted, such as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is a very good thing. Now I'd like to just get into some financial highlights. Your general fund, fund balance, which is an important number for the rating agencies. That's something that they pay a lot of attention to. Total $10.7 million. $120,000 of that is restricted for debt service. Another $364,000 was assigned for encumbrances, and that's funds that were carried over to be expended in 2023 where there was a valid commitment or purchase order outstanding. And then another $2.1 million was assigned for subsequent year expenditures, and that's free cash that was voted to fund the FY '23 budget. And that left you with $8 million of unassigned fund balance, which is about 18% of your budget. The rating agencies like to see a minimum for the higher-rated communities of 10%. So you're, you know, you're well over that. You've got a healthy unassigned fund balance. And that bodes well for, you know, your credit rating. You have a very good credit rating as it is. And I don't know if you're trying to increase that in the future, but building the reserves definitely helps in that regard. And your unassigned fund balance has increased steadily since 2013. Back at that time, it was about $1.6 million, which was about 6% of the budget. So you've really made some progress over the last several years, building up those reserves. Also included in the unassigned fund balance is your stabilization funds. And your general stabilization fund, total $2.6 million. That's up about $100,000 from the prior year. Your zoning stabilization fund, total $231,000. That's consistent with what it was in the prior year. Slight change, the vehicle and equipment stabilization fund, total $1.5 million. That was up about $300,000 from the prior year. And you establish a new health insurance stabilization fund, and that had $373,000 in it at the end of the year. So you're doing a great job setting aside reserves for these various needs. And your real estate and personal property tax collections, excuse me, came in at over 99% of the commitment, which is a great collection rate. Budgetary results for the general fund. Your operations resulted in an $852,000 increase in fund balance. Your revenues came in over budget by $1.6 million, mainly related to tax liens, which are unbudgeted. That was about $585,000. Penalties and interest were $307,000 over. Intergovernmental revenues were $238,000 over and motor vehicle, $151,000. Your expenditures came in under budget by $750,000, $54,000. So that's, you know, conservative budgeting, and that's what, you know, leads to building up reserves and having like healthy reserves so that you can address, you know, some of these unexpected things that, you know, come our way, such as the pandemic and other things. And those increases were offset by the use of $1.5 million. It was used to balance the FY '22 budget. Those budgetary results indicate that you have a structurally sound budget process and that you have good budgetary controls in place. Next, I'd like to talk about the OPEB liability. The town contributed another $181,000 to the OPEB trust in FY '22. The trust fund ended the year with a net position of $652,000. So you're starting to accumulate a pretty decent-sized balance in the fund, although this year, you actually had a net investment loss of $118,000, which is consistent with what we've been seeing in our other communities too, just with the downturn in the market. But your net OPEB liability totaled $50.8 million. That was a $14.8 million decrease from the prior year. And your discount rate increased from 2.75% to 4.76%, and that's the main driver of that decrease in the liability. And your discount rate is really impacted by the AA 20-year municipal bond rate, and that's been going up as the Fed has been increasing rates. And so, you know, the other communities are also experiencing the same thing, having pretty dramatic decreases in the liability as a result of these rates going up. Your rate is also a blended rate, which takes into account the money that you're setting aside in your trust fund. So as you build up more money there and you have a policy in place, then you're, they'll also look at the long-term rate of return that you can earn on the funds that you've set aside. And then that will also increase your discount rate over time. And it doesn't take a lot of change in the discount rate to have a really big impact on the liability. So it's great that you guys started funding that. As far as the net pension liability goes, that's related to the Worcester Regional Retirement System, and that's for our town employees and any school employees that don't qualify to be in the mass teachers' retirement system. The liability there was $17.4 million, and that was a decrease of $2.4 million from the prior year. That liability is about 56% funded right now, and that was an increase of 6% from the prior year. So that's, you know, a good thing to see. The discount rate there went down by seven and a quarter, which is more conservative, which, that's the trend with the discount rate on the retirement systems. Over time, the PARAC, the Public Retirement Administration Commission has been advising and trying to recommending that the retirement systems reduce those rates. They just feel that 7.5% is a little bit on the high side. But even though that rate went down, typically the liability would go up. But the retirement system has a 1231-year end, and the investments were still performing well at that point. And so that's what caused the decrease in the liability there mainly. And those are really the things I wanted to highlight on the financial statements. Next thing I wanted to go over was the report on federal awards, if that's all right. Entities that expend more than $750,000 a year in federal funds are required to have an audit of their federal awards. The town expended $1.9 million during FY '22. $808,000 of that was for the school lunch program. And another $556,000 was related to COVID funding for the education stabilization fund grants. So that was like the ESSA grants. Another $299,000 related to the special education program. And then there was $282,000 related to just other federal funds. We were required to test compliance on the child nutrition cluster. We didn't have any findings. We didn't have any question costs, and we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the program. And so those are the best results you can get for the audit of federal awards. That's a clean opinion, so that was really good to see. And then that takes us to the management letter. And there was really good progress made on the management letter this year. There were four comments in there. Two of them were kind of related, old outstanding checks and then abandoned property, which also relates to old outstanding checks. And we were recommending that the town develop and adopt a policy that would outline the process and procedures that were needed to resolve those items and to eventually get them off the town's books. And the Select Board did adopt that policy on May 3, 2022. So we're considering those two comments to be fully resolved. There was a comment related to having a fraud risk assessment conducted, and we had recommended that to all of our clients, just to identify any areas of weakness and then to be able to bring that forward to the governing body, to be able to, you know, determine if, from a cost-benefit standpoint, it makes sense to put more controls in place, or if you're comfortable with the risk the way it is. My understanding is that the risk assessment was completed and that the town is in the process of reviewing that draft report and getting it to a point where that will be final and be able to be brought forward to the board. And then the last comment in the management letter related to uncollectible ambulance receivables and writing those off on a timely basis and having policies and procedures in place to be followed to improve collections and have timelier write-offs. And the Select Board adopted a policy on June 14, 2022. And from what I understand, those procedures are currently being put into place. So these things, the last two comments, should be fully resolved, I think, probably in FY '23. The fraud risk is kind of like an ongoing thing. You keep assessing it over time, but that initial assessment will be out of the way. So from our standpoint, it was a very good audit, very good results. Financial position is very strong for the town. Great progress on the management letter. No concerns from our standpoint from like internal control deficiencies or anything like that. And that's it. If you have any questions, I can take your questions.
Open it to the board if they have any questions.
I'm just wondering, you talked a lot about the OPEB funding. What is the recommended amount for our budget to have?
For what you fund?
Yeah.
That's actually a question that's probably better for the actuary.
Okay.
Because they can put together funding schedules for you and show you like how the liability will come down over time and what it will do to your discount rate. It's not like a really straightforward question.
Oh, okay.
I could tell you that.
All right.
Your actuary would definitely be happy to help out with that.
And that's something Finance Director and I are looking at and bringing proposed policies related to that as well in a future meeting. Okay. That would help our balance as far as the liability amount. Okay. I think it should be a little higher. On top of what we already have for our policy. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
I just, for my own edification, which is why we're asking questions, right? With regard, I just have no situational awareness or frame of reference. Is this the ambulance receivables? Is this typical, this kind of a level?
Yeah, it is actually. There's, it's a complicated billing process because of the insurance reimbursements and the other coverages and knowing what's collectible and what's not collectible. And so I think that the third-party administrators can really kind of help understand, you know, what's collectible and what's not collectible. But it's more of having a process in place where you're, you know, reviewing it like monthly or quarterly to make sure that you stay on top of it. But it is common that, you know, we see a lot of uncollectibles like hanging around on these receivables.
I suspected that might be the case, but thank you.
Yeah. I will say, having seen your report probably more than anybody on the board here, that it is always a pleasure because they, you see the progress over the point. And I want to take the opportunity now to thank town manager and our finance director and their teams because, you know, you don't get reports like this by accident. It's by a lot of hard work, a lot of implementing incredible policies and working with the other town departments to making sure. I mean, this management letter is four pages long. One of them is a cover page, one's an executive letter, and one of them is a table of contents. And then there's one page back in front that had the four items. That wasn't always the case. There were many things in the past, and those have dwindled over the years. It sounds like we're going to lose another two. And to hear from a layperson, you know, the first time I heard this, that they were unmodified, that didn't mean anything to me. But unmodified reports means that there was nothing they needed to go back in and correct that they found that wasn't already there that was presented from the town. So I want to give my utmost thanks. It's been a rock-solid financial foundation for the town for many years and continues to be. So thank you to you both and to your teams. And I thank you for presenting yet another great report to us. I'm sure they're a lot better than giving bad reports.
Yep, it is.
But I really appreciate it, you and your time.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just like clockwork.
Yeah, we are.
Look at that.
This is amazing.
Incredible. Flat Hill Road Drainage Discussion. So I will, if you want to introduce this.
Certainly. So this is a follow-up item from a previous discussion the board has had. I can't tell you what timeframe that was. It was probably close to a year now. But in between then, there's been work done and meetings had between internal meetings and with our consultant, who is here tonight, Brian Marchetti. He did a study for the town that was part of a funding through-town meeting. And we had a meeting with the trustees at Flat Hill to discuss those results, as well as the DPW director was present and the land use director as well. And so I think maybe a starting point would, for Mr. Marchetti, to discuss those preliminary findings.
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering. As Heather explained, we did kind of some preliminary investigations up and down Flat Hill. We had the right-of-way surveyed. We did some test pits along the shoulders of the road, trying to figure out if there are areas within the town's right-of-way where we could try to collect and intercept and infiltrate some of this runoff that's been problematic. infiltrate some of this runoff that's been problematic on Flat Hill Road. And the preliminary findings of those investigations were that groundwater on the shoulders of the road was relatively high. We did test pits, and it was about twelve inches to eighteen inches below grade. So it really didn't bode well for us to have a solution within your right-of-way. So we went back and looked at the actual drainage within the subdivision. We looked at the detention basins, the infiltration basins. We did some site inspections at different times a year where we could try to determine where this runoff was coming from. And it was clearly evident during springtime, there was a lot of runoff just coming sheet flowing straight over the grass areas into the roadway. There was a lot of runoff exiting the detention basins through their outlet structures toward the right-of-way. So we went back last fall, and I was engaged to do an in-depth study of the actual subdivision approval back in, what started in the nineteen nineties and then carried into the two thousands. So I reviewed the subdivision plans, the drainage calculations, all of the requirements that were supposed to be followed at the time. It was designed prior to the latest master EP stormwater standards, which are very defined guidelines of what you have to do to control stormwater and infiltrate stormwater. But it was found that all of the record documents that the town had were pretty much in compliance with industry standard. So there were, there really was no smoking gun that we could say we found that something was designed inappropriately or it was undersized. So my study basically went back to looking at what was built, the condition of what was built back in the early two thousands. I believe it was two thousand and six or so it was turned over to present day. If the stormwater infrastructure had been maintained, what had changed between now and then? And it really, all I could find that was kind of pointed that gave me something to really look at was there was documentation that there was some flooding issues in that location back at that time before the subdivision was built. And then the flooding condition was exacerbated after the subdivision was constructed. So really, my study aimed at what could we do at this point? And it really turns to maintenance of the existing stormwater best management practices, the BMPs that are out there. Things like the catch basins, have they been cleaned? Are they functioning properly? The infiltration basins that are located basically at both roadway entrances to Cortland Circle, have they been maintained? Do they still have the same volume that was designed at the time when it was installed? Those basins, if they're not maintained, they do collect a lot of sediment. When the sediment builds up in the bottom of the basin over twenty years, it takes up a lot of that flooding capacity or storage capacity. One of the items that I noted when we were out there was the outlet control structure. There wasn't much water in the basin, but it was flowing. So it seemed to me like there was either groundwater infiltrating underneath the outlet structure. So it was constantly feeding groundwater to the outlet, which is discharging directly to the edge of Flat Hill. So, and it did look like there was a low-flow pipe in that outlet structure that appeared to be separated, so water was seeping through cracks that it probably shouldn't have been. So really, I guess the first starting point for us was if there was no easy solution, easy fix, what could we do in the short term to try to do kind of smaller dollar improvements to try to fix or make the situation better? And I, you know, agreed wholeheartedly with the letter that the Flat Hill Village Association put out, or one of their claims, that basically my report said it's, there's nothing that can really, you know, straight out fix it. These are, these are maintenance improvements at this time that we can look at to try to make it better. Really, the only thing to make something like this better is to collect it, pipe it somewhere, and store it as detention or infiltration. But the town doesn't have any right-of-way available in close proximity that really we could do this. So, you know, it's kind of a difficult situation where we can identify there is a problem. There are kind of smaller tasks we could do in the short term to try to fix it and try to make it better, but without really doing something in-depth or deeper, like underground detention somewhere that's not a, you know, it's kind of a closed system because of the groundwater situation out there. Being able to detain it somewhere is really the only way to collect this and let it, release it slowly somewhere else. But, you know, that solution can't just pick up this problem and move it downstream to somebody else's backyard. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. And I know there were, the trustees of the village of Flat Hill were going to look into their records of maintenance, what they've done in the past. They do actively, I believe, have Lakeview Landscaping, who's been doing maintenance to the basins. So, you know, I guess working collaboratively with them, hopefully we can see if this spring has been any differences. I think in December, they did maintain or clean out some of the basins. They cleared out vegetation. I'm not really sure beyond that what was done, but, you know, they may be able to give an update to see if, you know, what was done in the wintertime has made a difference yet, you know, now that we have an active spring with rain and snowmelt and everything else happening at this point in time. So.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Marchetti?
So going forward, the only thing we can do is collaborate with the Flat Hill Village?
Well, it's.
See if they're maintaining?
It was, it's a, it is a association. It's not.
Right.
Owned by the town.
Right.
So the drainage infrastructure is private. It's owned by them. You know, based, based on what I saw, maintenance was required. There are things that they could do to the basin to clean them out. There were, the inlet pipes were, you know, partially buried, which tells me that a lot of sediment's built up in the basin. The maintenance that I saw, according to their inspection reports, was just vegetation clearing and basically mowing the banks, cleaning the bottom of the basin out. That's not restoring the flood capacity of the basin. That's not taking all that material that's staged up over fifteen, twenty years, digging it out to restore that volume in the pond. So something like that is a bigger undertaking, but, you know, it's something that certainly would, would go a long way in restoring the volume that those basins have available to store that stormwater runoff.
So the town has no recourse to have them initiate this?
I don't really know. I guess that's, that's something that I don't, I don't think the town has an agreement with.
We have no agreement.
Perhaps this is a better question for the land use director, because it relates back to the original permitting of that, the project.
Mr. Bernie?
Hello.
Hello.
So the project was constructed and approved by the, or monitored by the planning board through a third-party engineer. In the, in contemporary subdivisions, when someone submits a stormwater report, there's an operation and maintenance requirement in the back of the stormwater report, and it details what needs to be done, what the maintenance is, what the steps are to do that, all those sorts of things. When this was approved by the planning board, that was not standard practice and doesn't exist in the stormwater report that was filed with the planning board. I know that there is reference to maintenance within the master deed for the association. That's a private document between the association and its members, so the town can't enforce that. And if I'm not mistaken, that references some maintenance requirements that were instilled or required through the conservation process. The orders of conditions that have been issued make reference to maintenance, but they, there's no attached operation and maintenance plan. And to date, we've been unable to find the original paperwork that went with the notice of intent filings. I was up in the attic of the Ritter Building this week, looking through what I'll call just piles of records, and nothing was immediately apparent that it's up there. It will take a probably more concerted and diligent effort of going through each box paper by paper. So that's something we can start looking for. We have been looking for them. They haven't become readily apparent. So the fact that this was filed thirty years ago and twenty-some-odd years ago, staff has turned over. I can't speak to what the record-keeping was like before two thousand fourteen or fifteen. So, and this is, this is from, you know, right around the turn of the century. If, if there are maintenance requirements through conservation's approvals that are specifically outlined, the commission could say you need to do X, Y, and Z per that permit. I think it's fairly unlikely that it's that detailed and specific that it would outline that these are the procedures or items that you need to do. It will probably say it needs to be maintained in the condition that it was originally installed. And then again, the enforcement process for that can be long and arduous. And what our actual ability to require certain things are, I would have to explore further depending on what is included in those documents, if they still exist.
So, Mr. Bernie, if I may follow up on that, because that was a longer answer than I think I expected from the question. I'm assuming that what your answer means is that the town has no real authority to enforce compliance with the drainage and catch basins and all related systems. Is that correct?
That's probably the most concise way to put it. I think that there is, I think that's probably ninety percent correct. There's a ten percent chance that there is some document that gives the town some opportunity, and we're continuing to seek out finding those within the records.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's it. Yep.
Mr. Franco?
Yeah, just three quick things. Is that it would be good if a way could be found that the town could exert some authority, like, you know, the fact that if you're creating a downstream, I mean, literally here, a downstream nuisance or something like that, that goes on to town property, that it seems like there might be a way to find some jurisdiction there. I did have some technical, well, some technical, some, some other questions. I, in the, I know you indicate there could be breaches in the drainage pipe system, you know, cracks or gaps, which would be, of course, allowing groundwater in, reducing the capacity to get rid of stormwater. So are these, are all of the drainage, the entirety of the drainage pipe system in the association jurisdiction, or is it some of it outside on town?
It's, it's all within the association.
All of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are catch basins in the roadway that collect the runoff from the streets, and it's piped underground to the basins.
Okay. Except for the part that goes under Flat Hill Road. That, that's town. Is that, that, but that's a short.
That's, that's on Flat Hill Road.
Right.
So those culverts that cross Flat Hill are within town right-of-way.
Okay. And, yeah, I do remember taking the walk out there, too, that whole, that site visit we did. So I have a pretty good recollection of all of this. The second thing is, it's just a technical question from my perspective, is that with the groundwater being so high, what, how are these, how are these catch basins, like, are they lined with an impervious material or like a clay soil or something? Like, what keeps them from just flooding with groundwater?
They're, the catch basins are, typically, they're installed on a bed of crushed stone. They're backfilled with stone and gravel, but the catch basins have a sump, so they fill with water.
Yeah.
So basically, they're not going to float if they're full of water. Groundwater, you know, I, I think this, this is likely part of the problem out there is, you know, in the last twenty years, groundwater's basically increased. It's raised in elevation. We, we see it all the time with septic systems, you know, when you go back to do a septic test years and years and decades later, groundwater is usually, they're designed with four feet of separation of the bottom, but groundwater is rising over the years. So it's something that, you know, it's not out of the ordinary. It happens all the time. Groundwater raises for whatever reason, and, you know, some of these pipes, depending on the materials in the concrete pipe, tends to crack over time. Their, their joints are all, they're all sealed with a mortar when they're installed, you know, but over time, that breaks and cracks, and water just finds its way into these pipes. So it's, it's not unheard of. It's very common. It's very likely the case here, because there's been a couple of times I've driven by in dry, dry weather situations, and there was water coming out of the inlet into the basins through these pipes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I'm trying to determine the, your conclusions as what would be the, in your professional opinion, the cause of the extra water that everybody has been seeing and that has been before the Board of Selectment on and off for some twenty years?
Yep.
And?
I guess if, my, my best guess would be groundwater elevations have risen. There's definitely groundwater inflow into these detention basins that were designed to detain, hold back, and slowly release and infiltrate stormwater runoff. It, it's pretty evident, clearly evident to me that the bottom of these basins, because the inlet pipes are basically, you know, half-full of sediment, you know, sediment has filled the bottom of these basins. So I think it's, it's a pretty sure thing that the storage capacity that's available in these basins is diminished from when it was constructed twenty years ago. The basins are also full of, because of standing water in these basins, they're full of cattails and wetland vegetation, which chokes their very, very heavy root systems. Take that, again, that, in addition to the sediment that's in the bottom of the basins, that takes up a lot of the volume that's available for stormwater. So in a situation like this, we typically grub the whole thing out. You dig them all back out to try to establish the volumes that initially they were designed for. So, you know, in my opinion, I think that the very first step would be the cleaning out of these basins to restore the volume that they were designed for. And the second thing would be the outlet structure. They both look to be compromised. They were, they were.
What?
They were compromised. They were leaking. There was water discharging from them, whether it was through the bottom, coming up from the bottom, or through cracks in the side. So if these basins, if the outlet structures were designed to not discharge any runoff until it reaches a certain elevation, which typically in a basin is several feet, with, with barely any water in the basin, there's water flowing out of them. So that's kind of contributing constant flow toward Flat Hill.
Would you attribute those two causes as equal, or the high, the groundwater elevation higher? I realize it's speculative, but I just wanted to know.
It is, but it's, it's, I mean, the maintenance is, as Adam said, back then, it wasn't required. Maintenance is one of the biggest things that all town departments, conservation commissions, planning boards, the DEP now, they drive home in every project, every single project we have approved that has any type of detention, stormwater system, they're required to file an extensive operation and maintenance plan. Lunenburg was one of the first that required them to be recorded, so it's a legal document now. So, and, and we, the Conservation Commission requires them to be, the operation and maintenance report has to be filed with the commission on a yearly basis, so the town can make sure these things are being maintained and kept up. So, you know, it's, it's a really important aspect of any stormwater design. You know, it only functions if it continues to operate like it was designed to operate. Just like a car, if something breaks down and something breaks in a car, it's not going to run right. You know, if the outlet structure, which controls the volume of water and the flow that leaves these basins, isn't functioning properly, it's not going to function like it was supposed to be designed. So I think maintaining these basins is a, is a very good first step. It, it, one, will likely help fix the issue that's happening, but it protects the owners of the, you know, people who live in the subdivision, their association, you know, it protects. protection infrastructure in the long term.
So in your estimation, would it be a fair statement if I said that if the detention system was restored back to its original operating condition, it would positively impact the situation but may not completely eliminate it?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed. I agree with that statement. The, the one thing that we witnessed out there that, we even trudged through the woods that day trying to find the source of that groundwater was, I forget the addresses, what they were, but the house on the corner of Cortland and then the house on, on Flat Hill, there was a steady stream of water just flowing from the backyard out into the street. And, you know, we walked through the subdivision, we went to the pond that's in the middle of the subdivision, we, we walked through the briars and the pickers and trying to figure out if that basin was flooding and draining that way, but it wasn't. It seemed like it was just surface water runoff, or, or groundwater seep coming from somewhere in the, in the thicket that we couldn't see, but there was a, to me, that was, that was puzzling. It was a, it was a significant source of that runoff that was draining right to, directly to Flat Hill that we couldn't put our finger on. We couldn't determine what the source was. You know, so, so I can't, I don't want to say fixing the basins is going to fix the problem, because there are other factors out there that, you know, we just couldn't, we couldn't figure out what they were, where it was coming from, you know? And really, the only way, like I said, the ultimate way to fix the problem is to pipe it, collect it, pipe it underground, and put it somewhere else. But that's the problem we're having here. There's simply no easy location to do that.
Have you even made any rough calculation about what the size, like what the volume of that proposed, wherever it goes hypothetical pond would be, how long, how large it would have to be?
No. It's, I would say it would likely be, just, just to, you know, make a wild guess at it, probably the similar size to, or maybe the size of both of those basins that are out there. You know, if we had a comparable volume, if those basins were restored the way they're supposed to be functioning, you're going to have a volume that they haven't had available out there to, to hold this water and release it slowly. But again, it's supposed to be released slowly, and the only place those basins dishard is right to Flat Hill. So depending on the height, the height of the groundwater, then the ground's not really infiltrating as much, so there's, there's a lot of factors that affect how that basin's going to function. The, the, like I said, the only solution I can see is to pipe it somewhere else. You know, there's, there's just not enough right of way available to fit something. Groundwater is high in the right of way, so it's no simple solution, you know? I think the town does own a piece of property out behind the Allison farm, that's town of Lunenburg land, but to get it from here to there, you're going to have to cross people's property to get there, you know? So there's always a solution like that, if we were able to obtain an easement and pipe it underground, you know, to get back there and design a facility that's big enough to treat and hold this water, you know, that it could be an answer. And, and really, it seems to be the only solution that would basically get rid of the flooding that's occurring right, right at the subdivision.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
We should open it up. Does anybody from the association, would like, anybody from the association like to speak? Thank you, Mr. Marchetti.
My name's Ned Pratt. I live at 10 Alderway. I'm one of the trustees. I'd like the other ones, other trustees to introduce themselves for us.
I'm a trustee. My name is Paul Surapis. I live at 30, 43 Cortland Circle.
I'm a member of the HOA trustee. I'm at 20 Cortland Circle.
And thank you for having us this evening. Just a point of information, when you walked through, there were no trustees present. So we want to make that very clear, there was no, there was a past trustee, but not a current trustee. So, so we're here to say that we want to be good neighbors. We've had a chance to meet with Susan Whalen, with Matt Allison, who have brought some very comprehensive information to us about the history of water, especially along Flat Hill, which is not very flat. And, you know, we know that, as we've heard from a couple of the folks this evening already, that although the planning board signed off on the property back in 2007, in order for us to be good neighbors, we have to take care of our property. So currently, and as you probably know with HOA situations, trustees turn over all the time. So we're in the process now of obtaining bids for not only looking at the cleaning of the various situations that we're talking about today, but also maintaining them in the future. I can't give you a history of maintenance or cleaning. We're new, newer trustees, but what we do want to do is make sure that whatever way we can mitigate what's going on, we certainly want to do that. But I want to make it clear that from sitting in the audience tonight, it sounds like it's a village of Flat Hill problem, and we think it's a greater problem. I think it's a problem that existed from hearing different viewpoints in my time since being elected as trustee. There's different viewpoints that there was always a water problem, that certainly the village of Flat Hill and other construction could have made it worse. But what we want to do, again, is be good neighbors. We want to work with this town to make sure, to get some sort of permanent solution, because it is very disconcerting seeing that water run by the property, especially looking at the property, it's Susan Whalen's property, where it's just like a river. So we're here to let you know that we're engaged in a situation where we want to be good neighbors. We're going to be doing cleaning, maintenance, there's a lot of upkeep. We're working with various vendors, and hopefully that's going to be happening over the next several months. And we're ready to work with the town with any way, shape, or form we can help to mitigate this situation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for?
No, I wasn't on the walk either, so I don't know. I didn't see it.
It's okay. I have nothing further, but thank you.
I just, I'll, first of all, thank you for the comments, and thank you for saying you want to be good neighbors. That's good. That's a great starting point. I, to your point that from the audience, it seemed like this was a Flat Hill problem, if that came across from anybody here or from myself, I, that is not what, what I think. I've, I've looked at this for the last five years, and it probably came up when I was a selectman before that, but certainly for the last five years, I don't think it's a village at Flat Hill problem solely. I think it's a lot of things, as the engineer said, that it's rising groundwater, but there are some maintenance things that happen and infiltration that need to be addressed, so I think it's a community problem.
Sure.
And I think I've told that to the residents who were the most affected when we went on the sidewalk, so.
That's great. It just sounds like when we're sitting back here, it just sounds a little bit different than maybe what you heard. I heard a lot of speculation, could be, would be, not sure if we have this paper, that paper, a lot of speculation, and it was focused on village at Flat Hill. So we want to say, look, we're at right now is we want to make sure that we're partners in solving the problem, and that's where we are. So that's the bottom line.
Is one of the things that the trustee is looking at is a, a full restoration of the detention basin as the engineer suggested?
We're not going to go into it tonight. Certainly, we're open to all kinds of ideas. I just want to say briefly that I'm not sure how you get that type of situation back to the original piece. I don't think there's any of those types, including the ones owned by the town, that will ever be brought back to the original way that they were. So we're going, again, we're going to work on it, we're going to, you know, try to solve the problems that, if we're causing any problems, solve them. But again, you know, we want to work collaboratively with everybody to make sure that the water issue goes away, and we all have dry places.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I just want to echo what Mr. Alonso said. I didn't, I didn't intend for anything to come along across like that either. I just, so, but, you know.
It's all good.
On the receiving end, I mean, that's, you know, that's reality too. The perception is reality, but it's not what was intended.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. I will open it up to residents if they would like to speak on this.
Hi, Chris Saint Germain, 268 Flat Hill. The engineer was, when he was talking about the mysterious runoff, that's my property. It runs along my right side and right onto the road. I have a two acre lot, but behind me, there's another two acre lot, which is the, where the mysterious groundwater is running. That's a buildable lot. It's, it isn't, if it was today, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be considered a buildable lot. It's grandfathered, it only has 50 foot frontage. It's been looked at twice now in a year. So I guess my question to the engineer is, if they built on that, is that going to make problems even worse? I think everybody has concerns about them building back there. I don't know what happens when you put a septic in a house on a place that's already really flooding.
Which, which lot?
You know the, how the water runs along my property? You know how you were talking about that river?
Over the top of the ground, yeah.
There's a two acre lot behind me. That's where the water starts.
That's his house. This is the one.
Okay. Yep. Gotcha. So if it's a buildable lot, then yes, a house could be built on it. Lunenburg's adopted a new stormwater bylaw, so even for every residential property, DEP doesn't require it as part of filings for new homes within buffer zones, but Lunenburg does. So they have a stormwater bylaw that requires you to control the stormwater runoff, just like you would if it was, you know, if we were designing a commercial development or, you know, a gas station or something. So Lunenburg requires you now to file for stormwater permit. It's for pretty much any disturbance of an acre. So there are things in place right now that would require the new applicant, whoever's trying to build there, to install stormwater BMPs to, you know, to collect and detain that runoff.
Well, that, but that, those are, that lot would be requiring a septic system, right? There's no sewer there.
Yes.
So, I mean, if the groundwater is that high, it would be...
I mean, if groundwater is high, it's a mounted system, or I think...
Unless, unless, or a closed system.
Yeah, and I don't know how this lot plays into the, the rest of Flat Hill. I know they have, you know, community septic there, so I don't know if that's part of it, if that ties in. So either way, if they, if it was a lot that was to be approved with its own septic system, it would just have to meet the Title V setbacks and depth of groundwater, so it could be a mounted system pumped, you know?
Mr. Bernie, I see you had your hand up. Are you still?
I was going to just add to Brian's point that it needs to be a one acre disturbance, and that lot may or may not be buildable based on zoning. I don't have a map in front of me, but like, like Mr. Marchetti was saying, you know, septic is going to have to perk, they're going to have to be able to find potable water, and if the, if the total disturbance equals one acre, then there'll be stormwater mitigation involved.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it appears to be a flag lot with a long driveway, so it'll, I'm sure it would be over an acre disturbance.
Anybody else for...
I have, I have a question about that lot. Could that...
Hold on, wait, wait, wait. Get to the microphone.
We need your name. Susan Whalen, 377 Flat Hill Road. Could that lot be used to detain water on? Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, it could be if the water could drain to it. So elevation wise, if this is higher than the roads and everything else, then you're not going to get the water uphill back to it. So, so right now, the way the subdivision's designed is the low points are at the ponds at the street, at the frontage. So everything's flowing down to the front, not to the back where this lot would be.
Yeah, but that, that's the, that's the location that has the water that's going through it if, if it got detained.
Yeah, plus or minus somewhere. Like, we were here, right? At the, at the right of way, we were at the frontage, and we saw the water flowing here. So where it's coming from, you know, it likely could be from somewhere in the vicinity.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
If anybody would like to speak, as soon as the other person speaks and they start moving back to their seat, don't, you don't have to wait for me to ask, you can just come up.
Hi, David Melvin, I'm 65 Page Street. Mr. Marchetti, have you guys ever done a geological survey of that entire area?
Not a geological survey.
Well, when you're looking at the problem of stormwater, it's because it doesn't drain, right? So why do we have such high groundwater? Our average wells out there are somewhere between, I'm shallow at 265, I think Susan is 600, 700. So it tells us that we've got something that stops water from draining, and yet, in the time that I've been here in the six years, we've added a couple of developments, which means additional septic systems that are now permeating into this groundwater. We have a lot of flat area, we removed 300-plus mature trees for a new development, so you have nothing else that's soaking up this water. We just keep compounding the issue, and from what it sounds like, we spent 20 years trying to find a finger to point at somebody instead of saying, okay, there's a problem, how do we fix this? And there, there's probably 100 different solutions to it, but nobody wants to say, let's, let's give it a shot. It's 20 years of, yeah, that's a good idea, we should study that. But when do we give it a shot? That area up there crowns and crests. We can't drain it into Beaver Brook because of stormwater regulations, but they're okay with that water flowing over the roads, collecting petroleum deposits, whatever else is on the roadways, and still ending up in the same place. Why is that? Why is it that we can't control the flow to send it to a place that naturally takes that water away? We already have drains that run down Page Street. They, they drain close to Beaver Brook, but I've seen at the Menards property, the water just comes straight through the hillsides. It's got nowhere to go. So cleaning out the existing drainage systems, it's not going to work. We're just going to spend money chasing a problem that's always going to exist. We haven't identified where this groundwater is coming from up at the top of the hill yet. Like, if we're going to spend money doing something, how about identify a source and see why? But it's not because we have too much groundwater, it's because we don't have enough place for that groundwater to go. It doesn't take much, maybe an inch of rain, before we've got water coming down Page Street, and it creates ruts, it's caused foundation issues. We've got all kinds of damage that gets caused by this water. How many years do we pass by before we say, let's give it a shot? Because right now, you know, I listen to the neighbors, and I've gone through so many of the, the documents that they have, you know, the catch basins, great idea. It's just a good place to grow mosquitoes. Like, we're, we're not fixing the problem. You'd be better off drilling holes in the top of Flat Hill and hoping that we could somehow get it past the ledge and into the groundwater where you want it to be. So I'm really hoping that at some point, we can pull the resources, and poor gentlemen of the village of Flat Hills, you know, yet, they sound like they're at fault, but that's because that's as close to the bullseye as we've been able to get so far. I'm glad that we've got great neighbors up there. Everybody has been super helpful, but the frustrations are becoming real, because there are lots of studies, lots of thoughts, lots of ideas, and zero implementations. At the end of the day, we should never allowed another development to go in until we had figured out what the, what the problem was with the stormwater to begin with. Now we've compounded an issue, and we say, well, there's nothing we can do, because we told them they could build. But you've just made the problem worse for us, so we've got another 20 years of studies coming up. In the meantime, my stone foundation's falling apart, I've got mildew damage in the basement, I've got runoff through the properties. Like, how do we fix this? How do we get to a point where we stop talking about it and we do something about it? Because I would like to help. I'll be happy to apply any resources I'm able to, but I don't want to just talk about it, I'd like to help. I'd like to see something implemented at some point. So I appreciate your time, but I don't know what we can do to, to fix it. I don't care if we drill a hole in the ground and start pumping it out to the wastewater management systems. I don't know what we do at this point, but it would be nice to start looking at solutions and not just continuously trying to find the, the problem or somebody to call the villain in this scenario. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'm hoping that at some point, we can become part of that solution as well. But I'd like to know if there's stuff that we can do to, to move this along, because 20 years of talking is, it's a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Menard, 672 Page Street. I, I do want to comment that the end result of all of this is that we are moving this into Beaver Brook, which is against DEP regulations. So by not doing anything, the net result of that is it flows down Flat Hill, takes a left onto Page Street, goes into the basin, comes between my neighbor's yard and my yard, flows down, floods my yard, goes into the catch basin, goes under driveways, across another berm, and ends up at Beaver Brook. I mean, I've shown you guys this in, in the past, so it is time to, to take action on this. There's time to recognize that a solution needs to be made. The temporary fixes of putting a culvert under Flat Hill and over into the Allison's yard only, only made Susan's problem worse. I think the town should kind of rectify that.
I, I think the town should kind of rectify that at this point. And at some point, you know, you look at the boundaries, my boundary is the town. The town is causing a problem onto my land at this point. Now, you can follow that back up and go to the source, but, and we could, you know, but in the end, it is the town now putting stormwater into my, my property where it shouldn't, shouldn't be going, so. I think it is time to, to fix this problem. Thank you.
So, if I could... No, go ahead, go ahead. I was just gonna ask a question, but feel free to come up. But while you're doing that, I'm just gonna ask, so I'll pose the question to you, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, so the, the initial, the initial phase, when I started working on this a little year ago, was to do a survey, look at what's available in the right-of-way, and see how we could collect this runoff and convey it to Beaver Brook. And it, it ultimately goes to Beaver Brook. Whether it flows across the Allison field and goes through the woods, or whether it runs down Flat Hill to, to Page, it all gets down to either Beaver Brook directly, or through Mr. Menard's yard. Like he said, there's a, there's a stream, a channel, culvert's going under driveways, and it eventually gets down to Beaver Brook. So, we initially looked at a couple of options to collect the stormwater runoff in catch basins. We looked at riprap swales along both shoulders of the road, starting up at Cortland and running south down Flat Hill, and then at some point, collecting it in catch basins and putting it underground, under the roadway, and basically routing it to the drainage infrastructure in Page Street. Most of that infrastructure up on the higher end of Page discharges into a stream channel, which I believe goes through his yard, none of the driveways. We also did a second option to route it all the way downhill to Beaver Brook directly, and discharge it right at the source. That would be the cleanest, easiest way to get the water to where it ultimately goes, but the issue there becomes, you can't just discharge floodwater at a higher rate than what happens today in existing conditions. So, that's where you need a detention basin to hold the water and release it slowly. And that's where we kind of ran into the, the brick wall of the right solution, the easy solution, the quickest solution, by far the most expensive solution, would be to collect it and, and route it down to Beaver Brook. But between Flat Hill and Beaver Brook, we need a facility to hold that water and detain it and let it out slowly. So that's, that's, that would be the ultimate solution. That would be what would fix this problem, that, that, but, you know, it can't just be dumped in there. The full volume can't be dumped in Beaver Brook, because then it's gonna impact somebody downstream.
And it's against state?
Yeah, unless we mitigate it to existing conditions and we release the flow slowly, then it doesn't meet state regulations.
Question, Mr. Marchetti, can you do like a septic system and disperse it through multiple outlets, instead of just to Beaver Brook? Send it through different fingers to different areas to control the flow?
Yeah. You could, you could do, so we initially, we initially looked at doing just that, not like septic systems, but we looked at collecting it basically at the source where the, the runoff comes overland onto, we, there's already a riprap shoulder on Flat Hill, but it's not a ditch, a depression, you know. I think, I think that was the intention years ago when it was put in, it was probably depression. That took some of the water. We looked at putting swales along both sides of Flat Hill all the way down to the intersection with Page Street. So we had multiple locations where we, we'd have to grub out the side of the road, put in swales with check dams to slow the water down. That allows the runoff to slowly infiltrate into the ground, but most of it will flow through, it'll, it'll be a, you know, kind of a, a separated type of multiple ponds as you go down the roadway. So all these things will do something. But with high groundwater, there's likely not going to be much infiltration happening. It's just gonna slow it down till it ultimately gets to the catch basins and the inlets that are at the intersection of Page and Flat Hill. And then once it gets to that stormwater infrastructure, it'll be piped directly down Page Street. All the infrastructure up at the intersection of Page and Flat Hill, I believe, stop and discharge at Mr. Menard's property. So all that runoff does discharge directly there. And then, you know, you rely on the volume, the flood volume that's available in those swales and those channels, and I'm sure his driveway probably acts as a dam and it, you know, it's, it's kind of a not the ideal situation if, if, if the detention was gonna, it would certainly make the situation better if we added all that up along the shoulders of Flat Hill. But high groundwater is an issue. We're not gonna get as much bang for your buck out of it, it's not gonna infiltrate much of the runoff. And the other issue was just the mature vegetation that's all up along Flat Hill. There were, there was a lot of significant trees that would have to be removed in order to install these types of BMPs.
The reason I asked the question is because I happen personally to agree with one of the previous speakers that this has been, and I, I've been one of the people pushing this all along. Because it is, to me, at that point, where it's like, we have to do something. First of all, it's affecting homeowners and their property, and the use of their property. It's affecting the brook. It's affecting the structure of the roadway, both underneath by undercutting it, so it's a safety issue, and a reconstruction of the road issue. On the winter, it becomes an over-the-water ice issue. You know, there's a host of things, and we just can't, I mean, I, I have to believe, I, I'm always of the belief that this problem isn't unique to Lunenburg. Somebody else in the world had this problem, and they were able to solve it, I'm assuming. So I think we have to really look at what the solution to the problem is, not mitigation, not, we have to solve the problem. So, I mean, I don't know what we need to do, and I don't know if your firm is the one to do it, but we need somebody to say, price tag aside, obviously price tag's gonna be important to the people, because it's gotta be voted in, but this is the system you need to put in to solve the problem, not to make the problem better, not to push it down to somebody else's, but to solve the problem.
And, and the solution in my eyes that would fix the problem is to collect it in catch basins, pipe it and get it away, but you need a detention facility to hold the water.
Okay.
And that's the roadblock for this entire, this entire issue, is we don't have a couple acres of land available, kind of near the low point of where all this water runs, to hold it, store it, and let it out slowly.
Can I ask, Mr. Marchetti, if you were to take property ownership out of the picture on the map, where is the ideal location for that?
I mean, that, that's something I would certainly have to look at closer to give you a, a real answer, but the, all the runoff ends up down toward Beaver Brook. It runs down Flat Hill. You know, water flows downhill. When there's an issue, you see where the issue starts and where it ends, it all flows down Flat Hill. So ideally, it seems to me like the solution would be as close to Beaver Brook as possible, or as close to that corner of Flat Hill and Page Street as possible. Because anywhere in the middle of there, we can take all the runoff that comes from the Flat Hill area. It seems to me like the, the, what I've heard is the biggest problem is up at the Flat Hill. It's coming down Flat Hill, it's leaving the subdivision, it's running down the shoulder of the road. It's ending up in the Allison's farm, I've seen pictures of it flowing straight through the farm. It ponds at the gate to where I believe they access the farm for hanging activities. So those are the couple of locations where water's always seems to be pawning in that swale. So it comes there, but it's all trying to get down Flat Hill to Page Street, where then it's conveyed down the road. So ideally, it's either at that intersection or as close to Beaver Brook as possible. But in order to help the situation, if we're doing it down at Beaver Brook, we gotta collect it up at Flat Hill and pipe it all the way down.
Please come to the mic.
Another clarifying question. We've talked about where the water's coming from. Have we looked at how many properties would potentially be impacted if we did run wastewater into Beaver Brook? Like, what's downstream from Beaver Brook? How many properties might we be impacting?
We call it wastewater?
Stormwater, wastewater, yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a, it's a huge wetland system. So it's a, it is a good place to discharge, it's a giant wetland system, and I believe it's the property of Butts Mass Ave Motors.
So it's like Mass Ave Motors, the...
What is it? The Mohawk Motors. I believe that, the whole salvage area, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the whole backyard behind Mohawk Motors, it's, it's, it's a significant area.
So as you're running down Page Street, that water runs to the left. I thought Mohawk was off to the right-hand side. Doesn't this run to the wetland system that's back there?
So if you're driving from, from Flat Hill down Page?
Yep.
It flows from right to left. So it's going toward 2A.
So that whole system is the wetland system. Mohawk would be off to the right-hand side.
Not from, not when you're coming down...
Not from Page.
Page Street, yeah, but Page Street, it would be to the left.
Okay.
Because again, we don't want to push this into somebody else's backyard, but if this is the best place to do it, one of their concerns is flooding, some of the other, the higher water levels and so on, what other problems would we be causing?
So the, the solution to that is a detention basin. So if you have the basin, and you're not increasing the peak rate of runoff, so the flow from what was initially, so in existing condition today, we would have to model it to see what the runoff is going there. And then our proposed basin would have to discharge, or hold back and mitigate it enough so that it releases it at the same rate.
Well, that can't always be true. We just had the Beaver Dam down there that they had to break up, so that certainly increased the water flow going downstream, because we were flooding Page Street last year. So at some point, we're, we're allowed to send some water downhill, when?
I mean, a Beaver Dam's a different situation. That's not a, that's not a, that's a different permit with DEP. That's not like a construction permit for development. I don't, I don't honestly know what the regulations are for breaking up Beaver Dams with DEP, but I know they have a process for it.
Yeah. I'd still be a fan of a multi-discharge system, so if you've got some going to Beaver Brook, we can set some out, different levels, allow for different volumes to run through, but...
Looking at the watershed, the way the whole watershed works from that area, everything from, call it, I think it's 800 feet into Cortland Circle. If you drew a line straight through it, everything on the Flat Hill side, all, the whole watershed discharges toward Beaver Brook. And the other side goes the opposite direction. So, you know, a, a multi-BMP approach, to have multiple basins, would it work? It, it certainly would, it helps, but ultimately, it all gets down to Beaver Brook.
Is there more ability to discharge to the other side of Flat Hill with fewer impacts to properties?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't, I know they both discharged. I know, I know Beaver Brook has a giant wetland system, and I believe, you know, the opposite side does as well, but, you know, I don't, I think routing it somewhere else, right now, it's all piped to Flat Hill. So to divert the flows and reverse it and go back the other way, I think it would be a pretty significant undertaking, but, you know.
Well, we're really looking at a seasonal issue. We have a problem sometime between November and March, but not all the time. So trying to get rid of this static pressure that just runs on the, the top of our ground, there's gotta be a better solution than maybe, like, there's gotta be a volume that we can come up with a calculation, as if we can send this much in this direction, we can send this much in this direction, what do we need to make up?
Yeah, and if we designed a basin, it is based on a volume, a volumetric approach, so we'd have to do calculations on, you know, you gotta estimate groundwater, it's not an easy number to calculate, but you'd estimate the groundwater flows, you'd estimate the runoff flows.
But we're not gonna solve the problem tonight.
Right.
I can tell you that. So I, I think it's good that you have a continued dialogue, but the point is taken, that I think we need, we're at the point where we need a solution.
Mm-hmm.
But...
Thank you.
Hold on, wait till you get to the microphone, so people at home hear the questions. Thank you.
At the last meeting in March 22nd, 2022, you talked about the possibility of doing a hydrological study and a topographical study. Were those done, or do you, do you not see a need for them anymore?
No, the, I think at that time, the topographical study was really understanding the full watershed. So after we reviewed all the documents, all the record documents with the town, that's what I was just saying, there's a line about 800 feet into the subdivision that is a clear divide where water flows kind of east or west. So it either, in existing conditions, pre-subdivision, that's kind of the topographic divide where all the, all the runoff from overland flowed toward Flat Hill, and then the rest of it behind, I, I forget the watershed it discharged.
It's one, one in seven was supposed to go to Flat Hill, and the rest of them, two, three, four, five, and six, were supposed to go to Fulcom Swamp. That's what the drainage report says.
So, when I say topographical study, that's all it was, was looking at the grates out there, looking at the contouring and seeing where, where the flows initially went and where they went, kind of in post-conditions. And that was one of the things I did review as part of reviewing all the record documents. The actual numbers were, you know, according to their calculations in the HydroCAD, they reduced the flows, you know, at design point one, which is basin one, I believe, it was by greater than 50%, the flows were mitigated.
But that actually didn't happen.
According to the studies and what I can review from the 96 to 2000 documentation...
But if you see the volume of water coming out of there, it doesn't match with the calculations.
And that's why we're here today.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I also want to add that I agree with Chris Menard about this being a town issue, because that design point one for watershed one was that culvert that went under the road. And nobody really took into consideration what was gonna happen to that water after it went through that culvert. And by extending that pipe down along the side of Connie Allison's field, that made the whole situation worse. It just increased the, the rate at which it discharges. So that's, for me, that was the, really the time when it got really bad. But I guess, so you don't think that decide, finding a way, the, the reason why the water's not going more towards the west rather than the east is worth doing a study for them? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, the, the study was done as part of the design.
Right.
In the design, the study was done, and from what I reviewed in the design, what was available, it, all the numbers said it worked. So, you know, to go back and try to quantify what we could do differently, or how we could pipe it differently, you know, it's, it, it all comes down to piping and storage. So if we're gonna move, what, what's an existing condition now versus, you know, 20 years ago? If we're gonna discharge water now from one side to the other and re-pipe it elsewhere, there's gonna have to be another infiltration facility, a detention facility, that's not gonna make it worse on the other side.
Besides the basin that needs to be, that you want maintained, could you address that outlet structure? Because I, I'm under the impression from what you've written before that it's not functioning correctly.
No, it looked like it was, it's discharging flows even when there's minimal water in the basin. I think it was designed to hold back and not discharge flows. So I think it's just, it's a corrugated metal pipe that's, you know, 20-something years old, and it appears to be rusted and separated, so, you know, it's something that, that I think does need to be maintained.
How much, should subdrains have been put into that detention basin?
Yes, there, I believe the detail shows that there was a subdrain.
Yeah, but with the groundwater so high, are those subdrains appropriate?
I mean, if, if, if the subdrain's out there and it's constantly full of water, then it's, it's gonna be adding to that discharge.
Right, okay.
And you're de-watering the basin. So you're letting the base flows kind of out through the outlet structure. But I haven't been able to see it. I don't know if it was installed or not. You know, they'd be, they'd be underground, so we haven't dug it up to see it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, I'm looking forward to working together on some sort of solution. Okay, I'm looking forward to working together on some sort of solution. So what's the next step?
Ah, that was my next question.
Yeah.
That was my question to the experts.
Yeah.
To the people who commented that it's, you know, a town problem, I would concur. And that's why I've taken the position consistently over the past five years to keep pushing this forward. I don't want it to disappear until the water disappears. So, I mean, I understand that it's a town problem, but I certainly don't have the qualification to fix the problem. I'm hoping we know what the next step should be.
I was just going to say, if the town had the land to put a detention pond, we would do that. And that's the real crux of the issue to me here is we need property to put a detention basin.
We should start looking up and down the roads and see if anybody's interested.
Do you have a modified detention system in that runs the span of the road? I mean, you own the road.
Yeah, so that's something we've considered and we've looked at. We haven't sized it, but it would be some sort of prefab chamber-type system or solid pipe system that, you know, isn't perforated and would just have to be designed adequately so it doesn't heave and float with groundwater situation out there. Which seemed to, it's doable. But it works well on flat roads.
This is Flat Hill Road. It's the best road.
But it's not really. There's a lot of pitch on the road, especially Page.
Come on now, we have a flat road on Page. Karen Menard, 672 Page Street. I just wanted to throw a little sort of caveat thing in here that while some of the water issues that are originating up towards the Village of Flat Hill area, that unfortunately is not Chris's and our and mine and Mr. Melvin and our other neighbors' concerns down on Page Street because that new, those new development that went up on the corner of Watt and Flat Hill, we sent a video back in the fall, I think it was. That stormwater drainage system, although I'm being told it was put incorrectly, is not working the way it was expected. And that water is also adding into the problem down on our end. So that whole section from the Village of Flat Hill through the corner of Page Street is nothing but stormwater runoff. It's, and when I, I am not exaggerating when I say to you that our sump pump, which we installed, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, which didn't do anything other than turn on on the occasional really heavy rainstorm, it has run 24/7 for the last two and a half to three years. And it doesn't shut off in the middle of the winter when we don't have any, when we don't seem to have any precipitation coming or really a ton of melting like on our own property, our sump pump is running. And the Beaver Brook Pond that runs, the water runs down between our house and our neighbor's house feeds into a spring-fed pond that doesn't freeze in the winter. So we're adding like whatever's coming in off the road, it's now adding into a spring-fed pond that can't even maintain any fish in it because there's so much crap that's just running down into it. So something needs to be done, but I think if we're going to, as a town, if we're going to look into trying to solve this problem, we shouldn't ignore the issues that are now happening with the new development on the corner of Watt and Flat Hill, where the old apple orchard was. Thank you.
Thank you. So what are the next steps?
I would ask, Mr. Marshetti, is it worth looking at a modified detention system that we could put on town, within the town right away?
Yeah.
As the next step?
Yeah.
And if there's one that requires the acquisition of land, we just need to know from an engineering position, how big, how big does that have to be? I appreciate your time. I appreciate everybody else's comments. Just one last attempt before anybody. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, interviews, appointments, reappointments. So we have an appointment for the 300th Anniversary Committee.
Patiently waiting.
So I'm going to ask you, I've never heard, we've, I've had interviews with you before. I've never heard you pronounce your last name.
Laura Brzezowski.
It is just Brzezowski.
It's just Brzezowski.
So the extra Z O in there is what throws me off.
That's how we say, yeah. I made my.
But makes it easier for me, so that's good. Of 21 Francis Ave.
21 Francis Ave.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like to be on the 300th Anniversary Committee.
So tell us why you want to be on it, a little bit about yourself.
I helped plan the Lunenburg Arts Festival back in 2018, 2019, pre-COVID. I was on the cultural council for five years. I like planning stuff. I remember when I moved to town, I saw the date on the town seal in the center of town and went, ooh, in 20 years, that sounds exciting. And now I'm really excited that it's, you know, only five years away. So I'd love to serve.
Cool. I would open up to the board.
Oh, I have no questions for her. I know her very well.
Okay.
I have no questions either, but I do want to thank you for stepping up.
I too.
She's also running for school committee.
Ah, okay.
Yes, in case she didn't know.
Well, we're not nominated here for that tonight, but okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions either. You've been before the board on, like you said, on the cultural council and I know you ran the arts event and that was a very successful event and I appreciate that. So yes, I appreciate you stepping forward. How many?
We're up to full capacity.
That's it, all right. You're it.
Right under the wire.
All right, the ultimate member here. So I would entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Laura Brzezowski to the 300th Anniversary Committee.
I will do that. I would like to make a motion to appoint Laura Brzezowski to the 300th Anniversary Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Congratulations, gets sworn in by the town clerk and then.
Sir, are they meeting yet?
I believe they have started. No, I think if you want to contact Pete Lincoln, then probably best contact for right now.
All right, so just go see Kathy and get sworn in. And then contact Pete, okay.
Good luck.
You do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ratification of the town manager's appointments of Seasonal Beach Director Elizabeth Simeone and Seasonal Lifeguards Paige, Gangler or Jengler?
Gangler.
Gangler, Ethan Gangler, Jared Bowser, Mason Bowser, Ian Laundrie and Nicholas Coronella. A lot of family affair things here, siblings here.
Yes, so all of these individuals are repeat employees. So we welcome them back in their roles that they had last year as well. So ask the board to ratify these appointments tonight.
And they're all certified lifeguards?
Yes, everyone has passed their certification.
And they all have the right qualifications? Like the director, does she, is she qualified?
Water Safety Certified.
Water Safety Certified? Yeah, okay.
Recently passed that.
Recently, okay, okay.
So any questions about, for the town manager, about any of the appointees? So then I would entertain a motion on those appointments if someone would like to make one.
I will make an appointment, a motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of the Seasonal Beach Director, Elizabeth Simeone, and Seasonal Lifeguards Paige Gangler, Ethan Gangler, Jared Bowser, Mason Bowser, Ethan Laundrie. Ooh, I think I said that wrong. No, okay.
Ian.
Ian.
Oh, Ian, and Nicholas Coronella.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Congratulations to all of you and good luck to having a very fun and safe season.
That motion was a lot easier to second than to make, so. I thank you for making it.
Town manager report?
Yes, it's just not in your drive.
Oh, all right, so now I have to listen.
All right, so to start with the existing vacancies, there's one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one associate vacancy for Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy for the Open Space Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee and one associate vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in any of these positions can get a volunteer application found on the town website, complete it and submit it to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at 970-582-4130, extension 144. List of current employment opportunities for the town. Before I start listing these off under interviews, appointments and reappointments and resignations, we did receive recent resignations for the Administrative Assistant for Conservation Rebecca Manley. She's been with the town for, I think, over a year now. She's a graduate student and she got a full-time position elsewhere. So it's a 10-hour position, so understandable. We're going to miss her. She was a great employee. As well as the Veteran Service Agent gave his resignation as well. He's been going for a degree in counseling and he got a position elsewhere. Right now, Lemonster is going to be helping out.
All for the better.
In the interim?
Yes. So to list the other vacancies for employment, there is Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, that's 24 hours a week. Assistant Town Accountant, 32 hours a week. Building Commissioner, 36 hours a week, which we have a candidate that'll be putting forth next week. The Digital Service Staff Librarian, which is 20 hours a week. Finance Director, 40 hours a week, which is a contractual position. Library Assistant, 19 hours a week. Police Officer, 40 hours a week. And Public Access Videoographer, which is 2 to 10 hours a week on average. Information on these job postings can be found on the town website under the Employment tab. You can find out more information on their job descriptions and responsibilities. There is currently one invitation for a bed out right now. That's for the Senior Center, also the.
The patio?
The Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, which I'm going to have to drill into my head. That is due on May 1st. An update on 925 Mass Ave. We've received the feedback report from our Expression of Interest that I submitted for that project from Mass Development. It is an eligible project for submission and that application would be in June. So that they just provide feedback on what makes a competitive application to give you some parameters that they typically award no more than $50,000 for this type of a project. So that was good to receive and quickly because that wasn't too long a turnaround as well. The EPA notified us yesterday that a subcontractor has been chosen and that the work will commence soon. So they're looking at a mobilization date of May 15th for that, for the old gas station.
Oh, finally.
Yes.
That'll be so nice.
I know. Two major things going on right in the center of the.
That's awesome.
Just want to let you know that if that Kubla on the roof does not have a home, I'm interested in that, right?
So is the historical.
What's that?
So is the historical.
She's saying it is because you're interested, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's staying right now. Like, so the awning front part is coming down and the underground tanks.
And the tanks are being removed.
The tanks and limited soil removal.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Because it is.
So the building is.
It's staying because it's, yeah.
I didn't understand that, okay.
Yes.
That's great.
And then part of the working with Mass Development will be putting together an RFP or some, how to dispose of the property, how that we can get it back on the tax rules and be a viable business in the center. The Assistant Town Manager will be doing, participating in the Monty Tech Job Fair on May 4th. So she'll be having the DPW Director and the Fire Chief will be going along with her. So that we're looking.
Hopefully as presenter is not as attendees.
Oh, my goodness.
Definitely looking for employees, yes. We're looking for, at all different ways we can recruit or attract employees. And I think starting, especially with, you know, kids coming out of school and, you know, interest in either government or, you know, some type of public service, hopefully.
That sounds great.
Yes. Other announcements, the Annual Town Meeting is Saturday, May 6th at 9:00 AM at the Middle School, High School. And the Annual Town Election is Saturday, May 20th from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the TC Passios building.
Any questions for the town manager on the report?
No.
Okay, old business, discussion of the FY 2024 budget, the FY 2024 capital plan, the Annual Town Meeting warrant articles. Anybody have any questions? Is there any updates on any of those?
Yes.
Okay. This would be a good opportunity.
So the board never voted, except you accepted the consent calendar for the Article 3 and the payment of prior invoice.
We didn't vote on that?
Didn't take a, I had, I asked Elaine to look at the meeting and there was no vote. You just accepted the consent calendar, which included that article with the amount, but never a formal recommend approval vote for that.
Let's do that now.
Let's do that.
Okay, so we are talking about Article 2. Is that correct?
Article 3.
Article 3. The payment to prior expenses, it's $4,000. It's a transfer from free cash. So I entertain a motion on our recommendation for that article.
Recommend the Select Board.
Take two.
I move that the Select Board recommend approval of Article 3.
I have a second.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
And Article 14, which is the Sewer Enterprise Budget, the board deferred that at the last meeting because the Sewer Commission needed to vote on the revised budget. So they, since then, they did.
And this is the same number?
It's in the book, same number in the booklet, as in the booklet.
This 1.1, 1.33, okay. So this is Article, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to explain what the changes were. So the capital expenditures within the budget, because they have a line item for capital expenditures, that was reduced by $15,231.55 to cover the increase in the Fitchburg rate increases. That was an increase of $6,600. And they had an unbudgeted increase that they needed to address as well in this revised budget of $8,638.53. That was for retiree costs related to bar bluffer retiring. So those were the, that covers the changes that were made.
So those were increases?
It was an overall offset, basically. It increased the amount of retained earnings.
Gotcha. Okay, so I entertain a motion regarding Article 14, the FY 2024 Sewer Enterprise Budget, which is 1.3, oh, $1,339,850.95.
I move that the Select Board recommend approval of Article 14 with the information presented.
Second.
Second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
The other one I want to update you on is the opioid stabilization account article. When the town council reviewed the motions, the, he denoted, there was a IGR, which is an informational general release from the DOR, that we request that exact amount that we received in this fiscal year from those settlement funds. And they revise our free cash number to include that. So the motion will be to include, to create the stabilization fund and to transfer the amount that we received in fiscal '23 from the opioid settlement to that stabilization fund.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think we need to vote on that. That's fine.
Okay, it's just an update.
Yep, good, because constructing that motion would have been. It was already, I can hear, I can hear the wheels turning. Yes.
And the consent calendar, the Finance Committee, And the consent calendar, the Finance Committee, that was provided to them, but they did not discuss it at their last meeting, so.
They're still.
We're gonna be going forward, I think, with the same calendar, and then whatever, you know, if there were objections at town meeting, then they can be.
Pull them out.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Article 1, which is the reports one, because they didn't submit a report for the booklet, there may, that article may be needed for, to actually hear the article. I know they're planning on printing their actual report. They finalized that at their meeting this past Thursday, so they'll have printed copies at town meeting of their report, but there still could be an opportunity for them to actually discuss it.
It's not gonna take much time, anyway. I did feel, when I received my booklet at home, the irony that it says Finance Committee Report and Annual Town Meeting Warrant is the title, but there was no Finance Committee Report. So I was like, well. Truth in advertising. Is that all the changes?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about any of that?
No.
All right, current business, approval of minutes of February 21st and 28th. I believe one of them I was not here for. The 28th I was not here for.
That was the extra one.
So just limit the motion to the February 21st minutes?
First, yeah.
Do we, do we have enough people to approve it, Tom?
Not for 28th.
Yeah, not for 28th.
Okay, so we'll just do the one?
We'll just do February, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of February 21st, 2023.
I move to accept the minutes for the meeting of February 21st, 2023, as presented.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Warrants and action items, let's do the warrants first. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of $301,536.34.
Just to let you know that Finance Director was still working on the school invoices.
We're gonna get it.
So they're, you may get a.
We're gonna get a message tomorrow?
Contacted.
Oh, really, to come in, okay.
Payroll in the amount of $903,572.39. And payroll deductions in the amount of $207,088.54. Action items. Anybody have any action items?
I do not.
I do not either. Committee reports.
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, while there is no pancake breakfast tomorrow.
This is usually late breaking news.
Yeah, when is it?
This is, this is, there will be, if the, if the schedule holds, there will be, this is a prospective report, an Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday, April 27th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Ritter Building.
The FinCom had their meeting last Thursday. As the town manager just reported, they approved their report for the annual town meeting, so that will be available. Only because this doesn't, it's, I'm gonna say this under committee reports, because the investigation team is not really a committee. I will say that we did receive the preliminary draft report from, um, from the assessor who's doing the lake property, waterfront property assessments. That report has been given to the Board of Assessors. They had a meeting this afternoon, Mr. Franco was in attendance, and it was discussed briefly on that, what to expect, and so the Board of Assessors are looking over that. I've been told the report will be finalized in the next week or so, from Mr. Kramer. So that's number one for there, so that is ongoing, and he makes recommendations in that report. I don't want to disclose what they are, because it's draft. Number two about the tax situation is that if you have not already filed for an abatement, you have until Monday, close of day, I believe, right? That's May 1st, is Monday, yes. Monday, close of day is the closing date, and then, of course, May 1st, on Monday, the Q4 quarterly bills, actually Q3 and 4 are, are due, yes.
The only thing I wanted to, I mentioned is that the school does want those transportation surveys in by May 1st as well. So if people haven't done them already, please do so, even if your child is not riding a bus.
I will say also on committee reports that we did receive, talking about the school committee, so thank you for jogging my memory. The school department submitted a letter to the Finance Committee, to the Select Board, I believe, and to the Capital Planning Committee about the article, there was a capital article about air conditioners last year that got approved, and then, of course, the budget was way over what was allotted, and now they have another proposal for those committees to review. We just received it today, I have not read it in full, so that will be before all those committees, you know, over the next few weeks.
Okay.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, so next week, May 2nd, my wife will be so happy for me to be here on her birthday.
Really?
Yes. And then May 6th, of course, we have the Annual Town Meeting, and next month, we actually go back to our normal schedule. I should remind the board that the town manager has submitted her self-evaluation to all of us, so that you should start doing your evaluations digitally. I'm saying this in, for Michael Ray, because I was giving stuff handwritten in the past, and that is absolutely annoying, because then you have to type it in yourself when you do the composite, and then make that appointment to review your evaluation with the town manager.
Can you just give, give us a reminder again on the, on the target for that, like?
Yeah, what is the target date?
Before elections, right? Supposed to be meeting with me, I believe.
This week, right?
So, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's supposed to be this week.
Okay.
I will say it's, it's, and I don't mean anything by this next statement.
Yeah.
But obviously, three of the members are not, they, they, the reason why we do it before the election is so that.
It's done.
No, well, so that people who have worked with the town manager over the year, if they.
Yes.
Either choose not to run or don't get elected, whatever, so three of the members will be here at the end of that. So I would say that you're up for reelection and you're running, that you really want to get yours done. I mean, not that we shouldn't get ours done, because we should.
No, I understand what you're saying.
But that was why it was done before, because otherwise you'd have.
New people.
And it was happened in the past, that all of a sudden we'd have two, one or two new members of the board, and like, the first you have to do is an evaluation of like, somebody you haven't worked with.
It happened on school committee as well, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So what you're saying is I have until the 19th. No, I'm joking. I'm, I'm joking.
You know what? I don't have to compile it this year. It doesn't matter to me when you get it. Talk me on another year. Uh, okay, public comment, town manager.
Yes, I do have a public comment. It's related to a question that was asked by Phyllis Luck at a prior meeting regarding how many town positions were created since I became town manager.
Yes.
So what I did is I put together, easier for me for visual, um, to show by fiscal year.
There we go.
And.
Town positions, got it?
Yeah, the label town positions, yeah, I found it.
So it shows in all, because, and some are, have nuances to them, because some are positions that are seasonal, where their hours vary, so you can't put a, you know, specific, you know, they're definitely non-benefited positions, but, and there, I denoted with asterisks what ones were the benefited positions. But in all, since fiscal '18, so, and including the proposed budget for fiscal '24, so that's a total of seven years, are, have been six full-time police officers, six full-time firefighters, two full-time facilities staff members, one which was a restored position that was cut in a previous fiscal year, two other benefited positions, eight non-benefited positions, and then seasonal staff for the cemeteries, parks, and board clerks positions.
So 16 benefited positions, eight non-benefited, and then seasonal staff.
Right.
Over, how many years again?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
And if I recall correctly, the police was because we had a very small.
Right, so the whole.
We were rebuilding.
We implemented a long-term staffing plan for both police and fire.
Right.
Which we've achieved the fire departments to get, so they could get their paramedic license. So that's been completed, and we put a pause for next fiscal year for the police department on their 10-year staffing plan.
Okay.
So it was to address inadequate staffing for both departments.
So it looks reasonable to me.
I'll defend each and every one of those positions.
That's what I like to hear.
If need be, I think there, we are still short staffed. I think what I've proposed in my budgets is to incremental change over time, and that's why you see some positions as non-benefited positions, so they can grow. And if the need is there for, to be more than a part-time position, it's there.
Well, to the, to the question and to the answer, given the audit report that we got yet again today, I would say that I have full confidence in your ability to not overextend the town, and you have a clear record of not overextending the town. And yes, these positions, you know, a lot of them were long overdue. Some of them are new as they, as the needs come up in the town, so I don't have any problem with you, and I'm glad to hear you'll defend them to the, to the end, because you should, and I support them as well.
I endorse that.
Yes, exactly. Where they used to say ditto.
Any other? Public comment from the public. And public comment from the board.
Nope, I have none. This is a very nice, short meeting, though.
I have no public comment, except to say I hope I see everybody there for the game show.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there. I'll be there. I forgot, thank you for reminding.
I just want to clarify.
I think it's on my calendar, but.
I know, it indicated Michael Ray, I will not be there, I have free prior commitment.
No, and that we knew.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, he will not.
Yeah, okay.
He's not on the team. It's the Heathers.
That's why I got solicited.
Yeah, it's the Heathers.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for stepping in.
Yes, thank you very much for.
It will.
Well, we're gonna miss you, Lou.
Should prove to be a lot of fun.
Because you probably have a lot of historical.
Yes.
There are certain categories I could do well, all the ones I would get smoked.
Well, make sure, make sure to check with the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club next year, just like with town meeting, and put that date on your calendar.
Yeah, and plus I can begin studying immediately.
Yes, well, you can look at, you can look at all the Youtubes of the previous questions, the kind of questions you're gonna ask, there you go, you can study up.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That'd be a very good use of time.
All right, we do have an executive session, so, uh, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session and to adjourn the meeting after exiting executive session, meaning we will not be coming back to open meeting. Pursuant to Mass General law, chapter 30, section 21, paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position, and the chair so declares, we will be speaking about the fire union and the public employees agreement.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Roca.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Good night, everybody, and we will see you next week.